County Government Center, I now call the July 15, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to order. Please, at this time, I will provide the invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all your blessings. Lord, we thank you for Union County and the way you've blessed us. Lord, be with us tonight during this meeting. Lord, I pray for my colleagues, pray that you'd continue to bless them, help us as a board to make good decisions that are pleasing unto you. Lord, I pray for our federal government, our state governments, and our, all of our local governments, Lord, to just be with our leaders, help them. Be with those who are less fortunate, lead us and guide us in all that we do, in Jesus's name. Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is item 24, 455, Youth Voice Participant 2024. I will recognize Andrew Balkum, Union County Cooperative Extension Director for this item. This is not Andrew Balkum.
I'm Autumn Balkum.
Oh, I know.
So, good second there. We, I'm Autumn Balkum, I'm one of the Union County 4-H agents, and I do youth activities, summer camps, overnight camps, and any kind of county widespread community events. Today, I have with me Ms. Kylie Green, and Ms. Kylie Green will give you all a presentation about her experience in 4-H, and invite you all to Youth Voice with her. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kylie Green. I am 14, and I'm a Union County 4-Her. I'm here today as Union County's Youth Delegate for the 2024 North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the NCACC meeting in August. Let's talk about the positive effect that 4-H has had on me, and how we can help other youth receive the same through 4-H and other ag programs. 4-H has a variety of clubs, ranging from sewing to cooking, marksmanship to ranch, but I may legally be focusing on the ag programs later on. In the years I have been a 4-Her, I've learned many skills and lessons that have helped me learn and grow as a person, one being public speaking. A couple of years ago, I wouldn't have done this. Now, don't get me wrong, I love talking, but in front of a group of people you don't know, and even sometimes people you do know, can be very nerve-wracking for anyone. In my time in 4-H, I have competed in many competitions, bringing home first in the district and in the state for some, done countless hours of volunteering and community service, met many new people, and made so many memories that wouldn't have been possible without 4-H. 4-H has helped me reach goals that I never thought could or would happen, and 4-H has helped me learn skills for these, and will continue to help me immensely with college and job applications, resumes, as well as keeping those life skills and memories with me along the way. I know how much it's helped me, and I know how much 4-H can help others as well. It isn't just about speeches, fun events, or winning competitions, it's about helping our community. Our community service varies from collecting food and working for soup kitchens, donating dog toys to animal shelters, or cleaning up our parks. We also help our community by teaching others about 4-H, so they can see the positive effect it has on everybody. That's why I believe we need to bring more visibility and accessibility into public school, 4-H, and other ag programs like FFA. They are amazing to have in schools, but imagine if we push it and broaden the programs and the level of capability they have helping the students. In other counties and states, there are 4-H and FFAs where teens are building trailers, doing all the electric by themselves, welding items for the programs to sell to raise money, and even having Gator Wars with ag companies donating the equipment. These are just some things that Union County could be doing, and there's many more ideas and options to provide life skills for these students. And not even just life skills. It creates good memories, teaches trades, and helps with careers down the line. For visibility, it could be as simple as having an online active social media presence, and showing the students accomplishments or what they are currently working on. And imagine how many more kids we could help if homeschoolers or kids enrolled part-time could join these programs. Making these programs more accessible is not an easy or quick thing to do. It may not happen in the next couple of years, but down the line, it could make a huge difference. That's why I would like to speak at one of the Union County Board of Education meetings, and it would be even better if I had some of y'all's support at the meeting. I care about helping, and I'd love for as many Union County youth to be able to participate as possible, since 4-H helps in every way possible with everybody. Thank you. And I would like to personally invite all of y'all to come to the NCACC meeting in August, so y'all can meet some of my fellow 4-Hers throughout the state and see how much 4-H has helped them as well. Thank you for your time.
She just needs to get a picture with y'all, so we can submit it.
Would it be easier to get that picture?
Well, she wants to stand here, but she can get one with the whole board. The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. We have one person that has signed up. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality with which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may have written comments, or may leave written comments, and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is Jen Sanders.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone, and welcome to another hot day in July. So, I'm just here again to talk about teachers and public education, and the importance of keeping public dollars in public education. So, obviously, with our legislators getting ready to increase the voucher program in North Carolina by $263 million, which is going to be on top of the already close to $1 billion that they're taking out of public funds to fund private Christian schools of whatever nationality they are, that doesn't quite matter. What matters is they're taking money out of public education to fund private schools that don't have the same requirements that our teachers need. They don't need to, the teachers don't need to be certified, they don't have to follow ADA compliance, they don't have to include families that they don't feel approve or follow their law. The reason why I'm adding and telling you all this is because public education is literally being attacked, and it is all from all sides. And you, as one of the highest employers of Union County, is UCS. And for us, it's really important just to get the word across that our teachers need to be paid. It's, and I know that you guys passed the budget, we appreciate that, UCS appreciates that, I'm speaking for them for a moment, obviously. But they need more, and the state had said in their budget that they were going to do 4.4% teacher increase. Well, the House and the Senate cannot agree on that now. 4.4, by the way, on a teacher that makes $46,000 a year, is less than $20 a week, which is less than a tank of gas. And I'm bringing that up because we really want to keep our Union County schools really high. We want our, we want the teachers to come in and be here because they're proud of our schools and our system, and the only way we can do that is if we pay our teachers. So I just wanted to put that out there. While you guys are talking to our elected officials at state level, please remind them that public funds should stay in public education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any one who hasn't signed up to speak that wishes to speak? Seeing as we have no other speakers, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for rezoning petition, CZ 2023-002 VL Properties. I will open the public hearing and recognize Bjorn Hansen, Senior Planner for Comments from County Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Benjamin Matthews. This is a conditional rezoning request on NC 218 called VL Properties for the name of the applicant. This is a request to rezone an existing conditional rezoning that was done several years ago to allow a auto repair facility on the site, which had been grandfathered from years ago and had lost its status because it had been out of business for a short period of time, and since then, it hasn't been reopened. And so, the applicant is requesting to amend the zoning to make it for a countertop fabrication facility with a design showroom as a part of it. The conditions are listed below. It's a 12,000-square-foot building. There's a rental house on the site, it would be removed. All machinery used in fabrication will be placed on the interior of it, and it will meet all of our development standards. This is the site plan, NC 218 is right here to the north. The building would be here on the eastern part of the site with a parking lot with one driveway. Those are the existing conditions. The upper left shows the existing rental house, the rest of the site, there's a little bit of construction debris that's on the site. Otherwise, NC 218 is a two-lane road. To the right, on the east of the site, roundabout will be built in the near future. Development status in the area, it's mainly agricultural, but there are some businesses nearby as well as large lot residential. Environmental features, there was a pond on the site previously, it has been filled in. That's where the building would go, so they would have to meet any kind of building standards for compaction of the soil to make sure that the building can work on that property. Terms of the zoning, again, you see that it is CZ that's on there to show that this is part of a conditional rezoning several years ago. There are some commercial and industrial properties immediately to the east. Terms of transportation, traffic's about 5,000 cars a day on NC 218, approximately 1,000 cars a day on Love Mill, and again, you can see the roundabout for Love Mill and 218. Terms of land use plan, it calls for rural residential. This is not identified as a commercial node. Generally, you're looking at intersections of NC highways, and NC highways is your commercial node. This does not have that. That could be an amendment you could consider in the future, but as a part of this petition, that is not proposed. Terms of schools and utility coordination, we did not contact public schools because this is not a residential rezoning. In terms of utilities, this would use Union County water, and it would use a septic service. And that has been located on-site and confirmed that it has adequate size. Terms of public feedback, community meetings require as part of the conditional rezoning process. Meeting was held in April, five attendees, they had concerns about noise, stormwater runoff, and impacts on property values. No changes were made as a part of the feedback to the site plan. However, they did commit to having the machinery related to the fabrication inside the building. At the rezoning meeting before the land use board several weeks ago, one person spoke against citing water runoff and aquifer impacts from the manufacturing process. This is not very close to Unionville or Fairview, so they were not consulted for feedback on this. We list a series of negatives and positives. We'll note that it is inconsistent with the land use plan, it's identified as rural residential. It will create some traffic impacts, it will increase some impervious surface. However, it's already zoned for business at a similar intensity. There's already existing businesses nearby, it will provide options for the property owner, and it is on NC 218, which is a truck route, so these types of deliveries and drop-offs of resources and equipment will be at least on an NC route. So, we recommend approval. I will note that the planning board recommended denial, a 3-2 vote, they cited concerns over traffic and harmony with the surrounding area. The applicant team is here to present additional information. I'm aware of at least one resident who has signed up to speak, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Hansen, how long has VL Properties owned this property that's in question here?
I do not know. They're not required to own the property to actually submit the application, they just need to...
Do they own it?
Uh, I think they do. Yes, they do.
Okay. Do you know how long they've owned it? You have any idea? And how was it used prior to this application?
Well, it hasn't been used recently, it's just had the rental house on it. Historically, it was automotive repair, and it was grandfathered essentially because it was before zoning, and then it it lost its zoning because if you're not used for a period of time, you can't just restart it. And they wanted to, and said, you know, we already have this history here, and so it was rezoned in 2018 to...
Was it ever used for automotive repair?
Historically. Not recently, but historically.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Bjorn, if you could go back to the site map?
Yes.
Thank you. Did I hear you correctly that there's one entrance into this location?
Yes, right here.
And that's directly off of 218?
Yes.
Okay.
Balkum.
What size trucks will be in and out of this? When this, if this business is up and running, what size trucks will be in and out of the property?
I think the applicant is best suited to answer that on the part of their presentation.
Okay.
I don't think we have any further questions. We'll hear from the applicant. Where's his presentation?
It's at 218.
Sorry, got to get my... Okay. I'm Jim Pradoch with Concord Engineering Surveying out of Concord, North Carolina, to here to answer any technical questions. The property is currently zoned for, as a conditional use for an auto repair shop. We want to rezone it to a countertop fabrication shop, 12,000 square feet. This property currently is used as a residential because it has a rental piece of property on it, a rental house on it with an existing home. And this is the property, I think you've seen that in Bjorn's presentation. Here is the, one of the, one of the comments that we got was traffic backing up from the intersection. And that intersection from our proposed entrance is around 800 feet away. Stacking of vehicles, you allow 25 feet per vehicle, so that's 30 vehicles that would have to stack up before it would get back to the driveway that we propose. So as far as traffic impacts, I don't think that's going to be a problem, that there's not going to be 30 cars stack up on that intersection, especially after it's turned into a roundabout. And you can see the location of the building there, roughly where we're planning on putting it. The other question that they had, and I'll speak to this, is drainage and runoff. We are aware the existing pond was removed back in the mid-'90s sometime, looking, and we have to make an evaluation as to whether or not, what type of condition that's in, so that we can prepare the foundation and the soil for support of this building. That is an engineering issue. We can accomplish that if the, depending on whether or not there's enough funds from the applicant to do whatever challenges may come up. But runoff will not exceed what is currently running off the property. We will protect the environment by having, and that's part of the process, by having the process filtered, and the sediment collected, and trucked off-site so that it doesn't go into the streams. I think that's the questions, and you wanted to, this is Harris.
So my name's Harris Leinberger, I'm the general contractor, working with the applicant, or owner, VL Properties. So, the concerns and questions when we went through the last meeting was what does a countertop fabrication company actually do? And what does a shop look like, and what is the impacts to the environment, et cetera? So, in the top right, we have just a general idea of what a shop layout would look like, and what they're anticipating and shooting for. Obviously, the countertops stored inside. But the biggest, and the most important piece of the, what's impacting everybody and their concerns would be the CNC saw and the water jet machine, and understanding how does that countertop actually manufacture. So, in the bottom right is a picture of what the machine actually looks like. So, it is equivalent to a large 16-inch saw blade that moves around, that's computer-oriented, et cetera. And we've got a picture of it and a video of it running to help everybody understand what this machine does and how it actually operates. So, we're going to run this real quick, so everybody can get a general idea. So, you can see, the machine is not individual operating. Computer-guided and cuts, moves around by itself. Efficient and state-of-the-art. And why it's important that it's state-of-the-art, because it's in the past, you know, typically, individuals would have had to cut a countertop that you have installed at your house, that's installed on these cabinets right here, by hand. That's not done anymore. What's important about that is it doesn't not create the dust, not near as much sound issues as it has in the past. So, the impacts to the environment and the impacts to the neighbors, and concerns have been around water, air, what happens with the solid waste, sound and traffic. So we'd at least like to touch base on those today and give a general idea of what, how this process works from start to finish. Once that countertop slab is cut, where does the water go? Where does the dust in the air, so forth and so on, what happens to it? So, all the water that is put on the countertop as it's cut goes into trenches around the machine. So, 90% of the water is actually recycled from this process, which is awesome. As well as, there is not dust flying around the shop, there's not dust flying out of the shop and going around the neighborhood. All the water's collected in the pit, which is in step one, in the water collection area, basically looks like a big bathtub, per se. Goes to step two, which is a closed-loop filtration system, they call it rapid settlement system. All the water is pumped from that pit up into the water hydro clear 90. That water is circulated, and the solids, which we call slurry, fall out of the water, and they go into a large bag, which you see in the step two up under the machine. And then in step three, you see where the slurry is discharged into a large bag. So all these solids are collected and hauled off. Touching back on solid waste. So we filter the particles out of the water, we clean everything, all the scraps, put in a bin, and they're hauled off. What's nice about that is they're repurposed, they're not put in a landfill. They're taken to a facility where they're crushed and resold to the open market for base for highways, base for temp drives for construction, et cetera. So, and all the pictures on the right, you see where the scraps of the countertops are, where they kind of pile everything up. Everything goes into one main dumpster, and it's taken off-site and recycled. So, sound, sound's definitely been a concern, and I totally understand, and don't disagree, why it wouldn't be. So we ran a decibel analysis on our phone and did a couple of quick videos. For comparison, on the left side, we've got 100 decibels is a table saw, circular saw, 90, hairdryer, electric, et cetera. We've got those for the next three slides. We did three different analyses for that, 15 feet, 35 feet, and 100 feet out. So, for perspective, this is the machine operating, and you can see where the decibel meter is calculating. It does not get above 99 decibels at any point in time, and that's from 15 feet from the machine. I'm going to run to the next slide, this is at 35 feet. We've run at 90 decibels, so for perspective, again, hairdryer, electric drill, that's from 35 feet away from the machine itself. 150 feet, it goes down to 80 decibels. Vacuum cleaner, garbage disposal. This machine's truly state-of-the-art, it is not loud. But that's for everybody to decide themselves. As far as traffic, so there are two deliveries per week. The suppliers bring the truck in the bottom right, and that's where all the slabs come in, in the countertop shop. They remove them, they put them in their shop, until they're ready to be put on the table to be cut. Here's an example of the showroom. We do not have, the business does not have a lot of customers coming to the actual site itself, into the shop, to do selections. They work for large national builders, those selections are done typically in model homes. They will have a showroom to have that capability, but it is not, I would not anticipate more than two to four customers. than two to four customers per month to need to come on-site to, or to come to the shop to take a look at these selections. So five employees, each one of them makes two trips off-site each day to go in, do installs. They work five days a week, Monday to Friday, eight to five. So take holidays off, et cetera. That's it. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bobb.
Are the doors always closed during the operation? Like is it climate controlled?
So currently, they're in a non-conditioned facility. So right now, when in order to do the videos and get a certain distance from it, we went ahead and opened the doors and said, this would be worst case.
But while it is in operation, day-to-day...
They can close the doors if they need to. In order to, if they chose to, yes, they could close the doors. Doors don't have to be open for them to operate their machines.
But maybe.
It's possible, absolutely. That's why, yes, sir, that's why we ran them. This is worst case.
Mr. Chairman. So the site of this building is going to be where the pond was filled in? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And we're talking about a approximately twelve thousand square foot building, I'm assuming like a metal structure? Is that correct?
Yes.
Poured concrete slab on top of a filled-in pond? And, I mean, I'm sure that, you know, that in and of itself presents some design challenges.
Oh, yes.
So what kind of things are we doing to mitigate any kind of structural problems, you know, with, I mean, can you go into any kind of specifics there about...
Well, okay, that would, first of all, you'd have to do, we have to do a geotechnical investigation, see what we're dealing with. Bad material would be removed, obviously, so that we can get down to good material if we need to do that. Or we may have to do a specially-prepared foundation for this. It depends on what we find out through our geotechnical investigation. We do drillings and test pits and those type of things on the site. We're obviously not going to want to put a building in that's going to fall down.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking that, I mean, this is going to be, that could be challenging for, from a design perspective...
Yes.
To do something like that.
Yes.
Why is, and I'm not familiar with the lot, so was there a reason why that part of the property was picked for this building?
You could go, yes, because it's the biggest part of the lot. The lot is a triangular shape, and to the west as you go, it gets narrower. This is the deepest part of the lot, and we need the room.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Bobb.
I will go back to my original question. What size trucks do you see in and out of this property on a daily basis?
Well, you saw the flatbed, and that's the biggest truck that would come in and out. I think the delivery trucks were the...
Yeah, that would be the delivery trucks. As far as the installation trucks, the two per day for the five guys, those are just standard twenty-five-hundred GMC trucks or Ford, whichever manufacturer you like.
Like a pickup truck.
Pickup truck.
Right.
Standard pickup.
And what dust is created by the equipment that is contained that doesn't go out into the community?
Correct. The process that he showed you, well, the water jet can waters the countertop down and keeps the dust down, and it goes into the slurry, which is then filtered out.
Any other questions or comments? We do have some people who wish to speak at the public hearing. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers shall limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, any, if any, with the clerk to the board. Mr. Pradoch, Mr. Leinberger, y'all signed up to speak. Have y'all already, I mean, you can, if you want to tell us...
We will, we have given our presentation, yes, but if there are questions, we'll be glad to address them.
Okay. Do you wish to speak any further at this time, though?
Not unless we need to answer any questions.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I just saw y'all had signed up. All right, our first speaker in regards to the public hearing is Roger, I believe that's, is that Milton?
That's right. Correct.
Roger Milton.
Ladies and gentlemen, board. I would like to speak in opposition of this, and I'm representing many of our neighbors here. We already have troubles up and down the road. Traffic, number one. People top the hill, come down toward Lonnie Green's old store, their Kipso Grill and Grocery, wide open. But my main concern is, I own, I live across the road about three hundred yards, and I have two rental properties. I bought one on the road, right beside Miss Margaret here is across the road from this property. And the water, my main problem is the water. From Love Mill Road, there's a little creek that runs behind Mike Henson's here and Joe's and runs right where the pond used to be. Now, but that filled up the pond, then it had an overflow, well, it ran under the road. And back there, back in the old days, Rastus Green told me that's where everybody got the water, so there's a big mound of dirt built up. Well, there's a swampy area. I mean, it's a swamp. Water builds up there, sucks down into the ground and comes up. I've got a well about forty, fifty yards from the branch there. So I get water from that, and it's very, less than two hundred feet. So I know I'm getting some water out of this aquifer that's under the ground. Then it wishbones into the neighbors at the back of our property and then right on the Rocky River. To me, it's a toxic nightmare because there's no way possible you're going to be able to stop all the dust with the doors open. And the wind blows from the west to the east and blows pretty good down through there. It's in the lowest part of the area, and I've lived there for forty years. And I see the water, how it runs off, how it accumulates, so forth on that. And we're, the folks around there are not against any kind of progress or anything in the future. We like, you know, progress, but we don't want anything that's going to cause toxic problems. I see no way possible they can purify this water and put it right back into the ground system to be in the wells and run down to the river without there being some toxicity to it. It had to be a heck of a filtration system to do that. That's my main concern. Now, we, Alan here knows more about what toxicity is. He's the one that's, this is his profession, what he did, and he could speak more on to that. But that is my main concern right there. And there's another house being built right beside Margaret, right across from them, too. So if she gets the dust, she's going to have trucks pulling out right across from her. And if you have a showroom, I mean, it's just, it's going to be, it's already bad. The DOT's tearing us up right now with what they're doing. And if they come in and do this, it's going to be no good for nobody, none of the neighbors whatsoever. I don't know one neighbor that's for it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alicia Sleet.
Hi, I live across the street where this is proposed, and I agree with everything Roger said. We're not against progress, but I just took some notes. It is residential rural, and there are businesses, but they're like a blueberry farm and a little guy who fixes watches and clocks. And there's a little farmer's market down the road and a restaurant. You know, we don't have big business out there. There's some people who fix cars and their, behind their house have shops. Big metal building, you know, it'd be right across from my driveway, just wouldn't look good. I moved from Charlotte in 2013, and I just, I love living out here. It's so nice, peaceful and quiet. The traffic on two eighteen is pretty heavy, and I'm sure this would not help at all. Let's see. Yeah, that's all I can think of, but yeah, we don't want it in our area. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sean Sleet.
No comment.
No comment from Mr. Sleet. Alan Griffin. Okay. Alan Griffin.
Yes, thank y'all for the time. I'm Alan Griffin. I live three-tenths of a mile. I'm a Union County resident. I live three-tenths of a mile due west of the property in question. And I come from a fairly unique perspective. I started in the stone industry in 1994. I worked seven years for the company of the equipment, Sean. I'm fairly familiar with the process, and I have four main concerns. One that I brought up at the zoning meeting, I'd like to bring back up, is these slabs, I understand these gentlemen said they'd all be stored inside. That'd be great. That would be a rarity. If they are stored outside, they're typically stored on A-frames. I've seen them blown over. They're roughly plus or minus a thousand pounds each. It's dangerous. If these people do wind up going ahead and building a site, it would be very nice for the people that live around there if that were fenced in. In a rural community, there's kids that ride four-wheelers, motorcycles, and they get in all kind of trouble when they probably shouldn't. That is a concern of mine, is the weight of the slabs, outside exposure to mostly kids. The second one is the noise levels. I don't disagree with that, the readings I saw. But one thing that happens after the slabs are taken from the saw, something else has to happen. And after these sinks are cut in, either a vanity for the bathroom or the kitchen sink, they need to be hand polished. And the way these, this happens is they take these pneumatic polishers, and they're air hogs and they're loud. They're a loud whiny noise, and if you couple three or four or five of these together, there is noise pollution, and it will leave the building. And especially if it's in a ten building, it'll just resonate inside. That's one thing. And then the groundwater, the closed-loop system I saw, that's good. I'm happy they discussed that. But most of these systems use something, a chemical known as a floculent in the industry. And what that does is it coagulates or clumps the heavy stuff in that first chamber he showed, and that's to drop the heavy stuff out. And maybe, I don't know as much as chemists, but maybe some further study would need to be done on the chemicals used in that as far as being exposed to the groundwater and how that could affect some things downstream. And the other one is the, there's a lot of air used in these stone shops, and whether you use, there's basically two types of air compressors, a screw compressor, a reciprocating compressor. They're loud.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the subject of this public hearing who has not signed up to speak? I will now close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding Union County Public Schools General Obligation Bond 2024 referendum. I will open the public hearing and recognize Beverly Law's Finance Director for comments.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we will be holding the required public hearing for the Union County Public Schools General Obligation Bond request for the November 2024 election. The public hearing is required as one of your final steps to place the bond on the actual referendum. Later tonight, you'll also have a business item to adopt the resolution for the language. There are representatives here tonight from Union County Public Schools as well, from the Board of Education and staff, if you have any questions for them. We've been talking about this bond referendum for the past several months. You've taken several action items leading up to this point. So Union County Public Schools has requested a bond referendum for November 2024. The bond referendum will be to fund the design of a new high school to be known as Parkwood High School, and the design and renovation of converting the current Farce Hills High School into a middle school to be known as East Union Middle School. The total bond amount requested is thirty-nine million, four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. And the bond language requires that we disclose the financial impact of the bond. The financial impact for this request is the estimated cumulative cost over the life of the bond using the highest interest rate in the past history of a general obligation bond is five-point-three-four percent. This is similar to a same general obligation bond in the past twenty years. This is the LGC requirement that we use for the financial impact. The total cumulative cost of the bond is sixty-one million, five-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. For the estimated maximum annual debt service impact payment to our annual operating budget is four million, seventy-seven dollars. This would begin in fiscal year 2026, the year after we would issue the bonds, and commence in fiscal year 2045. The annual estimated amount of property tax liability increase for each one-hundred-thousand dollars of property tax value owned to service the cost over the life of the bond is estimated at eight dollars. This is based on zero-point-eight cents increase in the Avalon property tax rate. This estimate is based on the legislative requirements of the new North Carolina Session Law 2022-53 for bond referendums. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, or if you have any questions for the school staff that are here.
I don't believe we have any questions, Madam Finance Director.
Thank you.
We have no speakers signed up for the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the subject of this public hearing that has not signed up to speak? I'll now close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda and consent agenda. There's a, there is one change to make on the business agenda. Without objection, I will move to item 24-502, which involves a board discussion on county zoning and development standards. Move that, we move that to the August 12 regular meeting so that we may have a full board present to consider the matter. Are there any other motions regarding additional revisions or amendments to either the consent agenda or the business agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, as well as the business agenda as amended.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by aye.
Aye.
We are now at the business portion of our agenda. First item of business is item 24-485, bid award for the Grassy Branch WRF expansion. I will recognize John Schutak, Union County Water Engineering Director, for this item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Manager Matthews, just want to say thank you for your time this evening. I'll be talking briefly about our Grassy Branch Water Reclamation Facility expansion project and the related construction bid award. So I'll start off just with a little primer as far as what the facility is and who it serves, touch on the background of why we're doing the project, give you a picture of the current status of the project. And then I want to talk about the project schedule, particularly as it relates to the consent order that we have in place with the state of North Carolina. And then I will talk about project costs and give you a brief overview of the funding for the project. We'll wrap up with the actions that we're requesting of the board this evening. So what is the Grassy Branch Water Reclamation Facility? Well, it's a fifty-thousand gallon-per-day wastewater treatment facility. It was originally constructed in 1998, and it was constructed to serve the Piedmont School Complex as well as the Unionville Elementary School. The Locksdale Farms and Smithfield neighborhoods, as well as several individual parcels, were later connected to the collection system and are also served by the Grassy Branch Facility. On the graphic on the right, you can see the treatment facilities up at the north end, just off Old Fish Road, south of two eighteen there. And then you can see the Piedmont Schools located off of Sykes Mill Road, Unionville Elementary School, just south of Unionville Indian Trail Road, and then the two major developments that are connected to it. So why are we expanding? So why are we expanding the plant? Well, the Grassy Branch facility has had regulatory compliance violations, and these are related to high flows, biological oxygen event or BOD, and total suspended solids and fecal coliform. The real thing you need to understand from this bullet is that first bit, which is regulatory compliance violations related to high flows. There's simply too much flow coming at the plant and it can't adequately treat it. So as a result of these violations, Union County negotiated and ultimately executed a consent order with the state of North Carolina, the Environmental Management Commission, in April of 2022. And that consent order provides for interim discharge limits. And that means that the compliance violations stop for the duration of the consent order, as well as outlining a schedule to complete the required improvements and addressing civil penalty amounts and their payment. Now, the required improvements outlined in the consent order are expanding the capacity of the plant from 50,000 to 120,000 gallons per day. And as part of the consent order, Union County paid approximately $2,000 in civil penalties. The remaining $6,800 in penalties that were assessed were held in abeyance. And those will be formally discharged, provided we meet the terms and conditions of the consent order. Should we fail to do so, obviously those penalties would apply. So where do we stand today? Well, the design and permitting is complete and we're asking for a bid award, so we bid the project. We bid it not once, but twice. The first bid opening was June 21st and we only received two bids. So we had to return those bids unopened and re-advertise the project. On July 1st, that second advertising period lapsed and we opened bids. Again, we received only two, and Dellinger Inc. was found to be the lowest responsive bidder. Their bid was just shy of $10.2 million. And I'll talk a little bit more about the project costs and funding sources here in a minute, but I did want to talk about the schedule first. As I mentioned, the consent order does outline a schedule to complete the work that is contemplated. That consent order, again, was executed in April of '22. The first milestone that it outlined was submitting all the documents for regulatory approval by the close of 2023, which we did meet. Our next milestone is to commence construction by the end of September of this year, or roughly two and a half months from now. From there, we have until March of 2027 to complete construction. And following the completion of construction, we have 90 days to demonstrate that we are in full compliance with our discharge permit. The important thing to note here is that with construction start of November, or excuse me, of September of 2024, we are anticipating construction to be complete by March of 2026, which is fully a year ahead of the schedule that is included in the consent order. So overall, we're in really good shape with the consent order. But focusing on the construction start, we have two and a half months. We're bringing this to you, excuse me, bringing this item to you today because that allows us two and a half months to complete NCDQ's required review and approval of the bid and our execution and review and execution of the construction contract with Dellinger Inc. as well as issuing a notice to proceed to the contractor. So we don't have a ton of time, but we have just enough time to get done what we need to. As I said, I'd come back to project costs and funding sources. So talking about the project costs first, as you can see here in the table, we have approximately $750,000 allocated towards design and permitting, as well as for construction administration services. And then you can see the construction bid there from Dellinger, which is about $10.2 million. This gives us a total project cost of $11.7 million. And I noted the construction cost with an asterisk because it's important to understand that the engineer's estimate ranged from $6 to $7.8 million as late as April of this year. And then it was updated to $8.4 million just prior to advertising for bids. So while we continue to chase the construction market with our estimates, we are routinely sadly upset by the results. The construction market simply is outpacing our ability to estimate what it's going to yield. But the good news is we have a plan to fund this. So we have recommended project funding, which is a combination of state budget earmarks in the form of ARPA dollars in the amount of $9.75 million and a $2 million allocation from the Water and Sewer Fund. Now, I do want to touch briefly on the ARPA funding because there's a couple of sources for this and our approach to allocating those dollars has changed over time. So, there we go. So as I said, we have multiple sources for the ARPA funding, first of which came from the 2021 budget session in the amount of $8 million. The second allocation was in the 2022 budget session in the amount of $1.75 million. That gets us our total ARPA or state budget earmark of $9.75 million. The original plan for allocating these funds was the land purchase of Site B at 4.65, with the remainder of the $8 million allocation going to the Grassy Branch project, or $3.35 million. When the 2022 allocation from the state came out, that entire amount was going to be applied to the Grassy Branch project. So you can see there in that middle column, we had planned for 4.65 million to go to Site B, $5.1 million to go to the Grassy Branch project. Given the fact that the reimbursement for Site B is undetermined or unknown at this point in time, we are recommending that we take that full $8 million allocation and apply it to the Grassy Branch project and then apply the 2022 allocation of 1.75 as originally planned. And that gives us the total amount of $9.75 million in the ARPA funding. The remaining $2 million to fund the project is going to be coming from the Water and Sewer Fund.
So just want to point out, you know, the board had previously given us authorization to approach the state about, you know, possibly shifting some of those Crooked Creek dollars, the $8 million, towards the 12 Mile Creek expansion. That did not occur or has not occurred at this time. Obviously, there is a timeline we need to meet. This is a funding source that's already approved for Grassy Branch. We already ran that through the state. They said that it met the requirements of that state funding allocation. We would just need to update the dollar amount to, say, $8 million instead of $3.35 million and plus the 1.75. So we think this is the best utilization of those funds and we could essentially get a reimbursement for all those dollars and not be waiting and hoping that we would get those funds at a later date.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager, so what you're saying then is, is the total refund, so to speak, or reimbursement, I should say, of the $8 million has essentially already been approved?
Yeah, they would just have to update it, but yes, they've already said it meets their requirements for funding out of that $8 million.
So there'd be no question about getting reimbursed?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So just to wrap up here, we do have requested actions of the board tonight. And just paraphrasing the actions that are listed in the agenda item, we're asking for you to adopt the resolution for the tentative award of the Grassy Branch Water Reclamation Facility Expansion Project Construction, authorize the award of the construction contract to Dellinger Inc. in the amount of approximately $10.2 million, and then accept the scope of construction administration services with Hazen and Sawyer in the amount of approximately $758,000. If you have any questions about the project, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to make sure we're clear, this expansion would expand capacity at Grassy Branch by 70,000 gallons?
That is correct.
70K. I mean, normally when we're talking about wastewater, of course, we're talking about millions of gallons per day, but this would be 70K increase?
Yes, sir.
And the total cost, I think, was about $11.66 million?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I think that in looking at this, I mean, obviously, this board's going to be bound to do something here. We have to increase the capacity. It's unfortunate that the expense of this has gone up essentially almost double from what was, you know, previously estimated. You know, I've said this multiple times, but sewer is a precious resource. I think that this goes to show just how precious of a resource sewer can be.
Any further comments or questions for Mr. Schutak?
Thanks, John.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the time this evening.
Any further discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution for the tentative award of the Grassy Branch Expansion Project Construction, and then two, contingent upon North Carolina Department of Environmental Qualities issuance of the authority to award, except the low bidder, authorize award of the construction contract to Dellinger Inc. in the amount of $10,161,266. And three, authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item. Then four, adopt the resolution providing notice, the Grassy Branch WRF Expansion Project Construction. And five, accept the scope of engineering services for construction administration as shown in the attached task order 7882-3 with Hazen and Sawyer PC in the amount of $757,700. And authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this item.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be supporting the motion. I don't feel like we really have a choice. I mean, you know, we got into a situation where the Grassy Branch package plant put us into a pickle with our regulator. And we were able to come under a special order of consent that basically forestalled, suspended any kind of additional fines or discipline from our regulator. So I agree, this has to be done. But before I vote for it, I think it's important just to kind of take a step back and gain some perspective on this. I mean, you know, here we are increasing a package plant's capacity by 70,000 gallons a day. That ain't much, especially in a county where typically that conversation is in millions of gallons a day. And even though the absolute dollar amount, just under $12 million, is less than we would talk about if it were a plan of scale, scale matters. You know, when you're a county this large and you're growing like Union County is, you know, we have to look at doing things at scale because economically, that's really the only thing that makes sense. And here we are. I did some kind of back-of-the-envelope calculations, so this may be a little bit off if it is. I apologize. But a $70,000, I'm sorry, a $70,000 gallon increase to capacity, $11.66 million amounts to, excuse me, I'm sorry, $167 per gallon of wastewater. I mean, you know, that amuses me. Perhaps, you know, I should cry and be amused. But, you know, that's what you get when you kick the can down the road and you avoid the kind of, you know, long-term decisions that this board and prior boards have ignored. Decisions that take time to implement, decisions that take time to finance. You know, when you can really build something at scale that's going to cost you a third to a quarter less than $167 per gallon. And it's not just fixed cost where this doesn't make any sense. You know, we know the operating cost per gallon is higher for these package plants. And my concern, you know, my trepidation is that if we continue to kick the can down the road on, you know, on not building wastewater facilities at scale, we're going to see more of these package plants. And indeed, our state legislature in the prior session has made it easier for that very thing to happen. We're going to see more package plants kind of multiply throughout the county. And in the short term, that'll maybe feel like some relief for some folks. But it's really per gallon, a more expensive solution in terms of building it. Per gallon, it's a more expensive solution in terms of operating it, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So, again, I'm going to vote for this tonight. I feel like that's the responsible thing to do. But anytime that we can stretch our perspective on these kinds of long-term questions, it's not a bad thing to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, sir. I tend to agree with Commissioner Williams, especially on the matter of scale and cost associated with this. Where I disagree with Mr. Williams is when he says that this board ignores long-term solutions. I want to be clear that there's not a member of this board that put us in this situation here with Grassy Branch, sitting here tonight. But yet, we are having to deal with the ramifications of, well, growth. Growth has a cost, and although I do agree in principle with what you said about scope, I also agree that, well, the folks out there in that area don't want millions upon millions of gallons per day with sewer capacity because what that does is that facilitates additional growth. So I think it's unfortunate where we are today. I think that this board has no choice but to accept this and move forward with this solution. So yes, I reluctantly made the motion and I'm reluctantly supporting it out of necessity.
Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
The next matter of business is item 24-460, Union County Public Schools General Obligation Bond Referendum. I will again recognize Finance Director Beverly Lyles concerning this item.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Tonight you have in front of you the final action items from you as a board to actually place the schools' bond referendum request on the November ballot. Tonight in your package, you have a bond order that will authorize the issuance of the bonds. And there's also a resolution that will set the special bond referendum and directing the publication of notice for the special bond referendum that we need to file with the Union County Board of Elections this week. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about these resolutions and bond orders that are in your packet.
I don't think we have any questions. Madam Finance Director?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beverly. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thanks, sir. So I will make the motion that we adopt the bond order authorizing the issuance of $39,425,000 general obligations school bonds to the county of Union, North Carolina. And two, adopt the resolution setting a special bond referendum and directing the publication of notice of a special bond referendum and notification of the Union County Board of Elections.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Next on our agenda is item 24-466, appointment of the boards and committees. The positions to be filled on the boards and committees have been advertised in accordance with the board's rules of procedure. Applications have been received and information regarding the vacant positions may be found in the background provided for this item. I will now entertain a motion regarding the Carolina Workforce Development Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
I'll make the motion that- I'll make the motion that, that we appoint Terry Parker to the Central Carolina Workforce Development Board.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, our next board is the Union County Land Use Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Hils.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I would like to make the motion that we appoint Mr. Mark Tilly as a regular member, as well as Mr. Derek Austin as a regular member to the Land Use Board, and that we further appoint Mr. David Brooks and Mr. Charles H. Walcup Jr. as alternate members. So that'd be Mark, Mark Tilly and Derek Austin as regular members, and then Charles Walcup Jr., as well as David Brooks as alternate members to the Land Use Board.
Thank you for the motion. All, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Counsel.
Mr. Vice Chair, those two positions for alternate, I believe one is an unexpired term and the other is for a full term. Do you have any preference regarding which appointment for which vacancy?
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir. So I'll amend my motion to appoint Charles H. Walcup Jr. as an alternate member to the unexpired term ending on June 30th, 2025. And then I'll further amend to appoint David Brooks as an alternate member to a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Any discussion on the amended motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
I will now recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no comments. Thank you.
It's now time for the Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Clancy Balkum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say I'm very thankful and grateful that the assassination attempt on the presidential candidate failed. I think we would be in a much different country right now had it succeeded. And would also like to encourage everyone to pray for all our candidates and all our elected officials on both sides of the aisle, and that there can be greater stability and peace. And that's all I have.
Commissioner David Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Balkum here. I think that's some real wisdom indeed. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Brian Hils.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank the ladies that came and spoke tonight regarding 4H. I believe that was Ms. Kylie Green, as well as Ms. Balkum. So I'd like to thank those two ladies for coming. I, I really, it meant a lot to me to hear the progression there, especially with something like public speaking. So I certainly appreciate them coming to our meeting tonight. I also want to talk very quickly on something that was on our consent agenda. So we did have an item on our consent agenda tonight to, to essentially enter into an interlocal agreement with Wesley Chapel and Indian Trail regarding a study concerning stormwater and to, at least two neighborhoods there with Wesley Woods, and then a second neighborhood there in Indian Trail. That was something that residents had brought to this board, and that was something that they had expressed concerns over. And so I, I want to thank my colleagues for supporting that item, even though it was on consent, we didn't have discussion. But I'd like to thank my colleagues for supporting that item because ultimately, that's a very important thing that really hits home and touches those, those folks' lives. So beyond that, I would also echo Commissioner Balkum's comments regarding our country and what we saw this weekend. I would just urge everyone to pray for our country, pray for the direction of our country, pray for the leadership of our country, and pray for peace and unity. With that, thank you all, to all the staff that, that came to the meeting tonight and all your efforts, and thank you. Good night.
Thanks to all our staff as always, and for all of our county employees for the great work that y'all do. Of course, fire, EMS, law enforcement, we couldn't do it without you. Of course, I reiterate what the rest of the members said as far as us, you know, we're all Americans and we can all get along, and it'll just make everything better if we do. So thank you for coming tonight and have a safe trip home. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn indicate by aye. Thank you. Good evening.